I'm calling to order the work session of Wilsonville City Council for April 19th at 5:23 PM. Are there any questions on order of agenda or items on consent? Hearing none. Are there any councilor concerns? Uh, Councilor West?
Quick question. I, this is an idea, um, so I guess it's kind of concerned. When I was in Austin this weekend and you see them in Portland, they have those little scooters where you can zip around town. I see Brian smiling, maybe I'm asking, I don't know if we've ever talked about it, they do it in smaller cities. It was a really fast economical and green friendly way. They do come with, I noticed some maybe inherent issues, but there's also some really big upsides. And like, I think it's an easy way to connect the, the two sides of the city too, especially if that bridge gets built and town center. Like it just felt like a really modern, green way to get around the city. And I saw some issues with it, but I also really enjoyed doing it and it was really affordable. Um, so I don't know if we've ever thought about that, our cities, our size do the scootering.
Yeah, we've, we've had a couple, I think, and I think the mayors probably had some conversations and maybe Councilor Akervold. Um, we, we talked to Lime for a while, but, um, they were asking us to pay for a lot of things and we bowed out of that, but there is a company that we're in conversations with right now. I don't have a lot to share with you right now, Councilor West, but it is something that we're.
It is something that we're, we are looking at for that kind of, also for the like last mile connection for people that are at the transit center, um, or may, maybe need to get from point A to point B after they get off the bus. So yeah, we are looking at that, having discussions.
Great. I liked Bird more than Lime, if that's anything. I enjoyed, and I use both of them, but I don't know. That's another company, but I, yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a test case, test case on that. I have absolutely never tested that. I'm not sure that I will, but does anyone else have any counselor concerns? It does sound fun. So we'll now move to our work session and we do have a lot to talk about here, some big topics. And I see on our agenda, we have, uh, most of the time allotted for the first two items. And I want everybody to really engage in this, in this discussion. So let's all just get those succinct, great comments and questions in and keep moving it along. And I'd like to introduce, um, our staff who are going to talk about the middle housing in Wilsonville.
You mean the Beckman Dip Bridge, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Beckman Dip Bridge comes first.
Yes. I saw Dominique's face and she's like, wait, am I, am I out of line here?
I'm sorry, that was, that was my error. I was just testing you. We're gonna start with the Beckman Dip project.
I think while Dominique is sharing her screen, I'll get started here. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and city counselors. I'm Nancy Kraschar and I've been assisting Dominique Huffman, who is the project manager for the Beckman Dip project. Next slide, please. Well, the project is located on, in the area crossing Beckman Creek on Beckman Road, just east of Canyon Creek and west of Wilsonville Road. It's nice to be back. We were last here in February and April of 2020. At that time, we updated you on extensive preliminary planning for the project and the need to provide fish passage requirements for the project, but the need to provide fish passage for the project because we will be widening the road. The need, we also updated you on the need to provide, to complete a hydraulic hydrologic study for Beckman Creek because when we provide fish passage, we will impact the flow control structure and the culvert that exists there today, which is, which are both located right at the dip. And this, um, has an impact on the downstream flows of Beckman Creek and we want to make sure we understand those impacts and if necessary, how to mitigate them. Tonight, we'll be updating you on the work completed since then and the staff recommendation for the preferred project design and construction detour as well as our next steps. Should you approve, the meeting agenda includes a resolution that approves a bridge design instead of the embankment concept and a full road closure rather than building a temporary road as an onsite detour. Next slide. I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but that's okay. We've done a lot of work since last April, answering a lot of the questions to clearly scope the project because it's important to make sure we anticipate the, as, as good of a budget as possible and we didn't want to dive into more design without having a good scope. So back in, I think we, um, I think we need to go to the next slide, Dominique. I've got my, my, I've got my stuff crossed here. Okay, this is the project history and then I'll go back to the, back to why, okay? Sorry about that. Um, as I mentioned, we've done a lot of project, a lot of work for the, for this project. In 2014, we started it, 2019, early 2020, we performed studies and these are all summarized in your staff report. With those studies, we established the basic alignment of a new bridge. We studied how to manage traffic during construction, which included three different detour options. And then we also have better defined the Oregon Department Fish and Wildlife fish passage regulations. We've just now started the hydraulic hydrologic study for the project to inform us of how the culvert and flow control structure removal or modification will impact the creek. Okay, let's go back to why, because that's really more important. Again, I apologize. Well, we're all very familiar with the dip and the safety issues that it, um, that it provides for the city. And why we, I want to tell you why we, why we're here, why we need to fix the dip. The dip is unsafe, too steep and too narrow. And these are things that I'm sure every counselor and mayor, the mayor knows. It's a major impediment on Beckman Road, which is a critical connection between jobs, shopping, schools and neighborhoods. Because of I-5, Beckman Road is only, one of only three routes for our east-west cross-town traffic. The dip is tricky for emergency vehicles, transit and school buses, and we routinely have to shut the road down during snow and ice events. The dip needs to be raised to be safe for all users to connect our existing and future neighborhoods and access the new middle school and future primary school on Frog Pond. A traffic signal is needed now at the intersection of Beckman and Canyon Creek to better handle the growing congestion at the existing four-way stop. But we cannot do this, we cannot install a signal until we fix the dip. Westbound drivers do not have sufficient sight distance for viewing the signal and/or stop vehicles. So the primary project goals are to provide a safe route for all users, a safe crossing for the future regional Beckman Creek Trail, this plan for underneath Beckman Road, and would go someday all the way down to Memorial Park. We want to provide access for public works to maintain the Beckman Creek sewer trunk, which also flows south of Beckman Road down to Memorial Park. And they are, there are also various stormwater outfalls along the creek that they need to get to. We want to create a safer passage for wildlife underneath Beckman Road rather than crossing the road. And then we're, another goal is to provide better habitat for water quality in Beckman Creek so that it's better for fish and other species. So I'm gonna pass it off to Dominique now, who's gonna go over what, um, what we're gonna cover tonight. Thanks.
To help focus our conversation tonight, here's a summary of what's been discussed. So every project or every alternative needs to meet the project goals. Will be required to provide fish passage and will require full road closure for a period of time. These are important to acknowledge because they are key factors that have formed the options available to us and influence our recommendation. So we've narrowed the selection down to two main alternatives, a bridge and an embankment. And within those two main alternatives, we have to consider traffic during construction. One option evaluates an onsite detour and the other closes the road for the duration of construction. And again, all of these alternatives have been shaped to meet the project's overall goals as best they can. And they all have the same roadway geometry, um, for example, two lanes, center turn lane, a bicycle and pedestrian facility on both sides of the road, et cetera. And based on environmental permitting, as Nancy mentioned, um, fish passage will be required in the form of removing or replacing the culvert and removing the flow control structure. So first, let's discuss the embankment alternative. So this option raises, proposes raising the road with fill and you can kind of think of a levee and get a feel for what this would look like. Before we get too far in though, I want to make it clear that we do not recommend this alternative. It does not safely and realistically meet the needs that the community has set for this corridor. Um, and to kind of do a, a brief overview, as you can see on the image with the aerial photo, the embankment has a large footprint. There are long tunnels for all users and these do not promote use for humans, um, let alone for fish and wildlife. And, um, to kind of get a feel for what this might look like, this example tunnel option is not very inviting and it's important to keep in mind that the tunnel we'd be constructing is about three times longer than this. So again, in an effort to save time, I'll summarize that the assumptions made in the embankment analysis are considered a base case. And when we originally started looking at this, we were thinking we could place fill over the existing culvert. It got a bit more complicated when we understood we needed to replace the culvert, um, overall. So this alternative has not accounted for other safety considerations in the trail tunnels such as lighting or ventilation. We understand we could make those types of improvements to make it a more, more viable option. It would, um, it would increase the cost quite a bit. So just to summarize, any modifications to improve the user experience would increase the cost and extend the construction duration of this alternative. So now if we take a look at the bridge alternative, again, this is a preliminary design shown here and we can see that the bridge is spanning the creek. The creek area has been excavated and the creek restored and this provides space for wildlife and the regional trail. This is a conceptual representation. Um, we wouldn't likely put wildlife right next to the trail, but we wanted to, um, at least show that the space was available for these uses. The open trails, um, provide the safest and most user-friendly option for the pedestrian and wildlife passage. And, um, this option also has the smallest footprint overall, which is the least impactful to the neighboring properties and the fewest amount of trees would need to be removed. This alternative is the most accessible for our public works and maintenance needs. As Nancy mentioned, um, there is a regional trail and a sewer line that would run, um, all the way south to Memorial Park and our crews would need to access that. The bridge is the preferred permitting alternative as well. Um, there is very little risk as agencies much prefer, uh, the re-establishment of creek beds rather than culverts. And this option has the shortest construction duration overall. So now that we've, uh, covered the two primary alternatives, which have both assumed full road closure to construct, and I'll talk a little bit about the traffic study, um, but first let's take a look at what an onsite detour might look like. So the same general layout would be, um, used for either a bridge alternative or an embankment alternative. The key considerations listed here also apply to both. So you can kind of see here, the, the existing road is right about where this orange hashed area is. The onsite detour would be to the north of the existing road and, um, you can kind of, if you, if you imagine standing on the road right here, looking to the east, that's what this cross-section shows. So here's the existing roadway. The fill to provide the temporary onsite detour is just to the left or the north in this picture. The existing culvert would need to be extended and the fill would be placed over top of that. And this option shows the bridge being constructed up in the air here. So it's important to note that all the work, um, is being done right next to the temporary road. So we're putting everyday users right into the construction zone and we have some safety concerns, both for the traffic driving next to heavy equipment and for our contractors and the space they'd have to actually construct the new roadway there. Another key consideration is it's, has the largest footprint and the biggest overall impact to trees and the neighboring properties. This is, um, the highest risk for environmental permitting. This option, as I mentioned, requires the culvert to be extended and, um, fill would be placed on top. Given that this is directly impacting wetlands and the creek bed, this may not be permitted with our current assumptions. This alternative would also take longer to construct and, um, we're essentially building another road to the north and then removing that road, so that, that makes sense. Even though, um, we'd be building an onsite detour, we would still be required to fully close the road, the road, um, and I'll, and again, I'll talk about that in a little bit here. But, um, the cost to provide an onsite detour is approximately $2 million and that still does not provide long-term benefit. We would end up with the same end results without a number, we would, but we would be removing a number of trees that, um, had to be taken out to construct this temporary impact or temporary road. So this option has such an impact that cannot be adequate, adequately fixed. And to kind of get an idea of what that, um, onsite detour area currently looks like, um, these pictures here, um, show the trees and the area that would be impacted by the temporary onsite detour. Our preliminary tree survey shows a number of well-established Oregon white oaks and a few Douglas firs that would need to be taken out. Um, and these are also primarily, primarily located on one property owner, which would be, or one property which would be significantly impacted by the onsite detour. I believe there was a letter from this property owner included in the updated packet. Um, if you, if you don't have that, we can get that to you. So as I mentioned, um, all of the, all of the options will require a road closure for some period of time. And that's because we are, we're raising the road so much, it makes it challenging to tie the existing road into the new road while keeping traffic going through there at the same time. The approximate closure duration for each alternative is shown here, um, ranging from about five months to 20 months, depending on the alternative. And to make sure we fully understood the impact any closure for any duration has on our transportation network, we worked with a traffic engineer and completed a traffic study. The study has been summarized, I believe, at past council meetings, um, and it's also summarized in the packet tonight. It is very important to discuss and understand, so we wanted to cover it again, um, and I will on the next slide. And of course, as the project progresses and we get closer to construction, we will be reaching out to, excuse me, the neighboring communities about potential traffic impacts. We'll be focusing on strategies to make sure detour traffic stays on the detour routes. Um, one tool we could utilize, um, our local access only signs, which are shown here. And really our goal is to prevent through traffic from detouring through those neighborhoods. So the traffic study evaluated the circled intersection shown here. And the impacts are minor and the intersections are able to support the temporary diversion of vehicles during construction, all except, um, the intersection of Stafford and 65th and Alexson, of course. Um, this intersection currently fails to meet our level of service standards and it does fail a little bit more with the added diverted traffic. A temporary signal was recommended to mitigate the impacts of Beckman Road, of the Beckman Road closure. Um, we've been in touch with both counties to begin, um, the necessary coordination to, to put that into place. I do want to mention that Scott with DKS, our traffic engineer, will pre, will be presenting more on this during the, uh, the council meeting tonight. And he'll provide more in-depth information on traffic study findings and, um, will also provide the example detour routes. So I know that's a lot of information and we've gone over a lot of it here, there's a lot more in the packet. Um, hopefully this table helps summarize the alternatives and their, their associated impacts. The alternative type is shown on the left, so you've got bridge and embankment. Breaking it down a little further, there's, um, the sub-alternatives, I'll, I'll call them, for onsite detour and road closure. And, um, along the top, there are a few key considerations. The cost is pretty straightforward. The cost range is from 17 million to 23 million and that gives us a pretty good idea for, um, bookings for project alternatives. The construction duration is how long the project will take to construct from the time we break ground to the time the road is open again to traffic at the end of, at all construction. Um, and that ranges from 15 months to 33 months. The closure duration is how long the project will take to construct from, um, oh, sorry, excuse me, um, is how long the road will be closed to through traffic and not even considering an onsite detour because there is a time we need to transition between road grades, um, for that onsite detour. So as, um, and that ranges from five months to 20 months, as we saw in that previous slide. And, um, the right-of-way acquisition, um, is shown here as well and it's far greater in the embankment and onsite detour options. And the environmental risk column represents the likelihood that the alternative would get permitted with the current assumptions. The lower risk means the less likely a change would be required that would significantly increase the cost of the project. So again, I know that's a lot of information and we've gathered a great deal of valuable information. We feel very confident that we're ready to move forward. What we've considered most during this process is finding a solution to make it safe and accessible, make it connected to needed facilities and services, and make sure it fits in with the plan that the community has and it, that it's also most beneficial for the environment. So taking to, into account all that we've learned, we recommend proceeding with the bridge alternative with the full road closure as this solution fulfills the city's goals and needs. So up next, Nancy will go over the next steps.
So tonight, we're looking for your direction on our, on our recommendations for the bridge design alternative and the full road closure detour option. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, there's a resolution in your packet for your consideration. The next critical path is to be working with finance to develop a funding strategy for the bridge. Right now, we know we have a gap of about $6.7 million for the recommended design alternative. And I did want to mention that the embankment, while we don't recommend it at all, if we try to do anything to those tunnels underneath for wildlife and people, that would add millions of dollars to the embankment option. So the other thing we'll be wanting to, um, come back to with is a, is a proposal on how to best coordinate this project with three other projects on Beckman Road. We talked about the traffic signal at Canyon Creek. There's also a sewer line that needs to be constructed, um, east of the dip. And then there's also street improvements to make, uh, Beckman Road between the dip and, uh, Wilsonville Road a complete street. So, uh, we'll come back to you in the near future, hopefully, to present what we find and, um, for your consideration. And then we also may return to discuss an alternative project delivery approach for this project because it's a very complicated project and we want to make sure we can get it done as quickly as possible. Um, and, um, in doing, in trying to get to that point, we may, we want, may want to consider an alternative project delivery approach. So in the future, we're hoping to come back to the council in May. Um, if all things go well, we could start the design in fall or winter this year and then hopefully construction could start in summer '23 or, and then it would go through '24. Now, these are definitely just placeholder dates. There are so many unknowns still with the project that these dates could change depending on many factors. The one thing that we'll be doing as soon as council has made a decision and we have a funding strategy is to start working on public information. As Dominique mentioned, um, should you, should you, um, approve our recommendation, there's gonna be a lot of work to do with the city, adjoining cities, the region, and particularly the local neighborhoods there to make sure that they know that we're gonna try to make this detour as successful as possible. There any questions? Counselors? Just Councilor Lindell.
I have a question. Um, I, I wondered, and I know it's not your recommendation to have a, um, temporary road put in place. But as I looked at this, it occurred to me that if the road is already unsafe, have you looked at the, uh, impact of putting a temporary road, um, that is at the same grade with the current road, but now has a different design and it's not straightforward? It seems to me that it might create additional safety issues. And I wonder if that is, if I'm correct in thinking that or, uh, because you, you didn't discuss that piece.
Let me pop back to that slide to make sure I'm, I'm understanding the question. Um, so we have, let's look at this bottom cross-section here. We have the existing road and the temporary road is, would be shifted just to the side of that. And is your, is your question, if we're doing this temporary road, are there additional safety concerns in addition to what's already experienced with the existing road? Okay.
Yes.
That is our concern, yes.
Of course, you know, we're gonna do, we're gonna make it as safe as possible if we go that route, but they're just our inherent concerns with keeping the same road profile and then having a construction zone right next to it. You've got heavy equipment, you've got the regular users. As a matter of fact, a lot of people may just quit using that route because they don't like it, but who knows?
It's a, it's a tough balance between limiting our impact, our environmental impact and providing an adequate cross-section there. And it's really, we really don't have enough room to, to do that, um, any wider than, than we've shown here.
Again, it would add a lot more expense to the project. We're, we're trying to, you know, be very budget conscious, but safe, safety conscience, conscious, but we don't, we do feel like this has, um, more safety concerns. Any other questions? Councilor West?
Uh, one question is, how does this impact TriMet, you, I mean, not, it's not TriMet, smart users? I can't believe I said that. How does this impact, um, smart users, um, with the significant detail because they're probably more vulnerable to big time changes and schedule changes if they're really relying on public transportation? So just if that's been thought about and then the, um, I got a little bit bristled when I, and maybe it's just, it's me just needing to be educated about dredging up a creek and then saying, we'll just rebuild it? Like, what's the real environmental impact of like literally scooping out their habitat? Um, and then I guess are we just recreating that or, like, how do we make sure, or what is done to make sure that the fish that do spawn up there and stream and go upstream and put other critters, call that place home, um, aren't, uh, unnecessarily disturbed or molested through the process?
Great questions. Um, I'll, I'll talk to the, the smart question first. Um, we have just begun conversations with them and it'll actually, we'll talk about it a little bit more in, uh, DKS's presentation tonight. Um, but based on their current routes and their plans for future extensions, this detour will not impact their routes or their service provided. Um, they don't currently have a route that goes down Beckman Road in this location, so no, um, no locations will be impacted. So no locations will be impacted and their service routes will not change. To address the second question relative to removing the existing culvert and re-establishing the creek bed there, there are many things that are in place when that type of work happens, like silt fences and other things to keep the impact on the creeks managed. I will say now, though, that the existing culvert is itself a fish barrier, as is the flow control structure. So fish aren't getting there right now, which is why it is much preferred, well, it's why we're required to remove them when we do this project. So we will have to remove all of that in some manner. And to put back in a, like a creek bed type scenario is much preferred by the permitting agencies because it provides a better habitat for the fish that we hope come and the other critters that we hope come.
Right. And I might just clarify that there are resident populations of fish above Beckman Road, but the migratory fish are, cannot get through, cannot get through the existing culvert. There's, we'll probably be doing some diversion of the creek also during construction. And there may even be some fish salvaging depending on what we learn as we go ahead and the things that the environmental agencies will be requiring. And of course, we'll want to do it anyway.
Thank you. I had a question about the alternate, two things that maybe you can discuss, some of the ideas on finding the necessary financing. I know that we don't have the identification of where those funds would come from, but maybe we just talk about that process a little bit. And also about your comment about bringing a different project delivery plan and what that entails, please.
Sure. Well, the finance director is looking at optional, options to fund project. As you know, that we, there's the possibility that the city could sell some bonds and pay them back. We need to figure out what source we'd use to pay back the bonds. There's potential for borrowing from other funds, the ones that are actually available to borrow money from. And that's really, I'm going to leave that up to the finance director because that's her expertise and not really mine, I mean.
Fair enough, fair enough.
That's her thing.
So just, you know, we will have opportunity to discuss that and there's very important work to be done.
Yes, because we also, after we figure out the financing approach, we have to get it, start getting budgeting done. We have, the budget, the draft budget for next year includes money for the project, which we do have. But before we go ahead with a lot of, a lot of contracts, we want to make sure that we have, we know how to pay for the entire project. And then regarding alternative delivery, Mayor Fitzgerald, I don't think you were here last April when we brought the director of Twelton Valley Water District to explain. He has had a lot of experience with something called progressive design build. And it's when you bring the contractor in at the very beginning, you have a team of consultants and contractor. And we work together with the city. Typically, we'll also have an owner's representative because the contracting can get a little complicated and there's a lot of cost estimate checking. And it helps to have a third pair of eyes. And so that's something we're considering for this project because it's so complicated. It's also possible we might join this project with, say, the sewer project. For sure, we'll probably join it with the signal project, maybe even the roadway improvements. So that's the kind of thing that these alternative delivery methods can be very good for. But we need to get a handle on the funding strategy first and then try to figure out how we want to coordinate all this, all the work.
Thank you. I want to give Council President Ockervall, do you have any comments or questions, Chance?
Sure. I think, you know, I appreciate this presentation. I feel comfortable with staff's recommendation here. I don't see the embankment as a real solution to what the project goals are. A two hundred and forty feet long wildlife tunnel doesn't really seem like something that a fish would utilize. So I think there's, you know, some concerns there. So it seems like the recommendation is pointing to a safer option, a quicker option, and also therefore a cheaper option. However, with all of that said, each thing on the table here, there's going, it's going to present inconvenience, you know? And so I'd really like to just have a kind of lean into, how can we manage that inconvenience and mitigate that inconvenience as we move forward? It sounds like that piece will come perhaps in more detail after the resolution tonight. But I'd like to hear, you know, or just have that confirmation of the close conversations with our fire and our police and with schools for the school bus routes, you know, if they're utilizing any section of that road. You know, even the, building the other road to have, and it occurs to me like that that would be a very slow section of road. So all of them have to be closed for some period. When this other road is operating, it's going to be a very, very slow speed. So, you know, it might not be a solution for those emergency responders. Anyhow, you know, I just hear more about those conversations as we try to move forward with the selection. And I appreciate the presentation. I do feel comfortable with the recommendation.
Council President Ockervall, I just want to say that based on my experience, what you're talking about is like so important. And preparing the public and communicating at the very beginning with all users of the road so that, so they're well aware of it long in advance, people can plan for it. They, the longer they can plan for it, the least they'll be inconvenienced because they'll already have their plan of action. So, and then the coordination with all the entities you mentioned is of course, you know, very important as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. I also appreciate the incredible amount of work that's gone into this. As our city has grown, we have residential areas out there. We have schools, we have fire trucks and school buses now out in that area. And more and more, we will have pedestrians walking to and from school and on trails, back and forth between houses. And all of that requires the kind of road that we are hearing described. That we just need to go to that, we need to correct the Beckman dip. And it is going to be a big undertaking, but it's what our city needs. And I think what we've found here is the way to do it right. And we're going to continue learning more about that process. So thank you very much. Any other comments on this topic before we move on? Okay. We will now move on to the middle housing in Wilsonville project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Polly?
Yeah, sorry. I may have missed the transition while I got promoted. Let me go ahead and I can share my screen here. It's good to be back with you this evening. Dan Polly, Planning Manager. And it's good to be back with you this evening to discuss the middle housing project. This project's been progressing. Look forward to reporting to you what we've been working on tonight and get your further guidance. We've had some great conversations with the Planning Commission as well as with various stakeholders and the public. And we'll share kind of what we've learned from that experience. And just happy to report that the project's on track and it's progressing as we expected. And look forward to it continuing to come together. So really what we want to do tonight is review some key takeaways from our outreach to date and then get council's confirmation on some key directions that we've, input has directed us towards. So first of all, I've found whenever I start using this term middle housing, it's important to review exactly what we're talking about. So when we say middle housing in this context, really, we're talking about a range of smaller attached or clustered housing types, typically built at a similar scale as single-family homes. I'll often hear them called missing middle because they're largely missing from most of these neighborhoods for the last seventy years, which is the entire time that Wilsonville's been built. So in our previous work session, council supported some desired project outcomes based on past goals in the Echo Housing Strategic Plan as well as state requirements. You'll see those here. This includes a thoughtful inclusive built environment, compliance with House Bill 2001, meeting housing needs of diverse community members, incorporating impactful public outreach, making sure we have infrastructure to support middle housing, having standards that are usable to developers in the community, and also having, also to minimize parking congestion. So as we go through these recommendations, all of these desired outcomes have been at the center as we've developed these recommendations. So the outreach, specific outreach to date, and I know the mayor joined us for some of these, really appreciated that. We had meetings with a number of the Frog Pond developers and property owners. Also had a general community meeting. We met with the Old Town neighborhood. We had a stakeholder meeting with the broader developer community. We've had to date two focus groups, Spanish language focus groups, and have at least one more planned. We've had a lot of individual conversations with property owners and other interested individuals. Also, we've had a community survey running for a couple of weeks now that we'll be closing down and starting to analyze after this evening. And truth of all, some key takeaways is, first of all, defining missing middle and it's really important to help the community understand what that concept is. Also, the project, as it was still focused on the look, fill, and function. This is both at a neighborhood scale as well as an individual site scale. And input we've received has really reinforced that as a focus and people really want everything to work together and be a good design that looks great, fills right, and functions properly. And that's really continues to be a central part of the project. Received some additional direction for Frog Pond and Old Town and some of the choices we have there. And I'll get into that a bit more later tonight. And also, the importance of parking has been reiterated. And, I mean, we generally hear the importance of parking in residential neighborhoods, but through the outreach, some of the reasons of that have come out and really been discussed well. And that includes the ability for people to visit, to have culturally significant events at one's home. Also, as prices increase and more people may need to share a household, then that can lead, and not having enough parking can inhibit the ability to do that comfortably. So those are a couple ways, the importance of parking. And on the parking, I just want to quickly just summarize what we're doing there. So as I believe the council's aware, the state rules limit our ability to acquire more than one parking space per unit. But what we can do is explore, is explore ways to encourage additional parking as appropriate. And through the survey, we've explored some of those concepts and will continue to explore those concepts and bring some recommendations to council in that regard. We're also working to make sure that where parking is provided, to meet the minimum, that it is accessible and usable in terms of being accessed and also making sure that it's not used for other purposes. So tonight, the topics of focus will be Frog Pond again. So revising our Frog Pond conversation and updating you what we've been talking about there, and Old Town, as well as this concept of detached middle housing. So Frog Pond, so a way of review, House Bill 2001. And again, we're talking, when I say Frog Pond here, we are talking Frog Pond West. Frog Pond, again Frog Pond East and South are a separate topic that will be, the rules around middle housing in Frog Pond East and South will be developed as part of the master planning project coming up. So as we talk about this, again, we're only talking about Frog Pond West. So House Bill requires the city to increase the overall density in the master plan area from about six and a half to eight dwelling units per acre in order to take advantage of some provisions to keep the master plan as similar as possible to that that was adopted in 2017. Really, our feedback has emphasized that, you know, that two notions. First of all, flexibility, but also the desire to keep as close as possible to that 2017 Frog Pond West master plan, particularly in the look and fill and what people that bought into the community were really expecting in terms of the design. And accordingly, if you may recall, in our previous work session, we covered three potential options. Briefly, option one was just allowing duplexes as required by the statute. Option two was, in addition to duplexes, allowing the specific number of additional middle housing types to get to the state requirement of eight units per acre. And then option three was just allowing all middle housing types throughout. So, and what feedback we've gotten previously was mostly towards option two with some remaining interest in option one. However, since that time, option one, there's been additional clarification or changes in the state opinion and it really makes option one no longer a valid option. And I'm happy to talk to any of you offline about the details of that. I won't take time to do that right now. This really leaves some version of option two as the remaining supported option to pursue, which is again adding kind of, in a bonus or as additional units, the number of, as middle housing, the number of units needed to get to that threshold required by the state. And there are two potential methods of doing this. The first method doesn't change the map that you see here, all the sub-district mapping. Essentially just allows, as appropriate for the context, additional units in each sub-district. And this is what the project teams recommended and the Planning Commission has voiced their support for. The alternative method would be to actually change the sub-district map to change essentially all the medium lots to small lots and actually even probably some of the large lots to small lot in order to otherwise get to that threshold required by the state. So with the other component of that, some of the key feedback we got from talking to Frog Pond developers and property owners is where the project is and kind of the conversation, who the players are out there. Then regardless of what allowance we put out there, not much middle housing would likely be built. The developers that are, that are really pursuing the properties out there are really interested in that single-family product type and that is likely what would still be built out there. So with that conversation, the Planning Commission brought up the notion of, okay, if we really do want to meet all of those desired outcomes, should we then require some middle housing in Frog Pond West? So, and we actually do that at a limited level today under the adopted master plan. So currently, we require ten percent of the small lot sub-district to be duplexes or the two-unit count houses on projects that are greater than ten acres. So the concept that we've discussed with the Planning Commission is to increase, first of all, to increase that percentage for the small lot sub-district. Also expand that requirement to the medium and large lot sub-district. to the medium and large-lot sub-district, but as you do that, only include those middle housing types that are appropriate, that fit the context, that can fit the urban design, and this bulk and scale of buildings that would be expected in that sub-district, and also remove the 10-acre threshold. And that way, we're sure that there's some level of middle housing in Frog Pond to meet the variety of needs of households in our community. So, but with that idea, then, if, and the planning commission supported, again, supported some level of that, but the question remains, they've asked us to come back of what, with some recommendations of what percentage then would that be? So, and it's helpful to think of this on a scale. So, existing, that requirement of 10% in the small-lot sub-district, with the amount of small-lot sub-district left, likely that only result in four additional middle housing units in Frog Pond West, if nothing was done. The other end would be if, if the requirement matched what the state allows, requires us to allow, we're talking about just short of 140 additional units in Frog Pond, which is quite an increase, it's over 50% additional units. So, the project team feels the answer is somewhere in between, and the planning commission agrees that the answer to that percentage question is somewhere in between, and we'd come forward with additional recommendations based on some analysis of what would be appropriate there, based on both what the needs are, as well as what would fit in the actual context and keep the look and feel and function as expected. So, with that, really, I'd like to go around and get your feedback on these Frog Pond West questions, and then I'll go on to those couple other subjects that we have to cover tonight. So, the two questions I'm looking for feedback on is, do you support reaching the eight dwelling unit per acre allowance through changing requirements without changing the sub-district map, as recommended by the planning commission? And in addition to allowing, do you support requiring a percentage of context-appropriate middle housing on the remaining undeveloped land in Frog Pond West? So, that, Mayor, I will pass it back to you.
Thank you, Councilor Lindvile. This is a very complex issue, and I thank you for your presentation. I certainly, on number one, I support that, I'm not quite sure without knowing what a percentage means. I agree with the concept that it is somewhere in between, and I guess I have two questions. One is, in the prohibition to option one, the explanation had to do with duplexes not being able to be counted toward the allowance, but in your comments, you said currently in our five sub-districts, 10% of the units are currently either duplexes or two-unit townhouses. So, are the two-unit townhouses acceptable to be categorized as middle housing, and that is why it would be acceptable, or do they kind of fall in the same category as the duplexes? And then, the other question that I have, and I'm sorry for giving you two at once, but number two in your questions is underlined allowing and requiring, and so, I think when we originally started talking about this issue, it was intended that it would be permissive rather than prescriptive, and so, I just wanted to clarify that that is now changing to be prescriptive, in that we would require a certain number, and how does that get decided in terms of the percentage and the district that would be involved?
Great, great questions, I'm happy to answer those. So, in terms of your questions, of the duplex question, that, and whether or not two-unit townhouses, essentially, which is a duplex with the property lying down the middle, count as middle housing, our understanding right now is yes, but I do have that question out to the state for an official clarification, and we'll bring that up. So, my expectation is that, yes, the two-unit townhouses count, but I'm still awaiting official clarification from the state on that point. On your second question, it really relates to our different project, desired project outcomes. In terms of compliance with House Bill 2001, it's strictly about allowance, about permitting it, and then letting the market deliver what it may. But when you start getting into the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and some of those related things, that really, as the planning commission looked at that, and we looked at that as a project team, we're doing all this for not, and we're not really going to get any middle housing? The question is then, is there something that's appropriate to encourage through a requirement of actually getting some middle housing out there that would be, again, integrated successfully into the design of the neighborhood?
So, could that percentage be spread across all of the undeveloped districts at this point, or is it possible that, depending on how the building, you know, how the applications go, that it might all be concentrated into one? I mean, are both of those options available if it is a requirement?
Yeah, a full slate of options would be available for the requirement. The current thought process is that it would be spread, but it wouldn't be the same for different types of sub-districts. Again, we're really trying to get to that appropriate context, and so, the types and the percentage that would be required would very likely differ between small, medium, and large-lot sub-districts. Because, again, we're trying to keep the lot sizes the same, and with that, the size of the buildings the same, it's just the number of units within those buildings may vary. Also, the large sub-district may more encourage, again, that needs more analysis, but encourage the detached middle housing types that would be a scale that would fit better with the anticipated design of that sub-district.
Sounds like there's lots of options.
But I ask this, because it is different than what we talked about, it goes beyond just allowing to actually requiring, and really, what I'm looking to, for the council is to confirm, is that worth continuing to explore requiring some level?
I have a comment, I guess, and question on that. So, if we don't, just to clarify, or help me clarify this, if we don't require anything, because the, as you've described, the current builders in Frog Pond West are, you know, aiming toward the original plan that was developed before House Bill 2001 came into play, so if we don't require anything, we will not really expect to have any middle housing coming out of this?
That's very likely, yes.
And, one of the problems with that is, I guess, the main problem with that is that as a community, through the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan that was adopted unanimously by the council last year, and then also by the work that community members have done, and the council has done on our diversity, equity, and inclusion work, we have committed to wanting to make these opportunities available for more people to have middle housing. So, that's where I come to the realization that we do have to require something, and so, if you could kind of run through, once again, what that would look like for a builder, how would that be illustrated?
So, a builder comes in, let's say they're allowed, they have a parcel, and for a round number of purposes, they were allowed 100 units under the master plan, and let's say, I'm going to choose, this is no indication of what the final number is, let's say 15% is required of middle housing. That means that of those 100 lots, 15 of those lots would be some type of middle housing, which they'd end up with 115 housing units on that property rather than 100.
And they would, in their design, just develop a way to do that without changing the sub-district map? Thank you. Does anyone else have comments or questions? Councilor West?
Yeah, thank you. I guess, this has been, with developing out Frog Pond West, a really long public process that predates, I know, me being on the council. I think it was a heavily debated, public process when Mayor Fitzgerald was a counselor, and Scott Starr, and I think Council President Ackerfall was a part of that, I know it predates both myself and Councilor Lindvile. I know that the previous planning commission did a ton of work and public outreach on this issue. Our city, I feel like, already offers some of the most, I don't know if it's called middle housing, but we offer a lot of multifamily type of housing throughout our city, more than, ratio-wise, more than any other city in the state, and we already were outperforming House Bill 2001. And, I, of course, am fine with one, because that's my statute, and we don't really have an option there, with your first question, Mr. Polly, but I am concerned about not remembering how Meadows and surrounding neighbors and the rest of the community came together, and a previous planning commission with, worked hard on this issue, and not remembering the work that went into that, and then allowing, enforcing more higher-dense housing on the outskirts of our city, not close to essential services, it's not that close to Smart, it's not that close to where, like, town center area, it just isn't, or a lot of the shopping and stuff like that. And we already know that some of the roads out there, those county roads, or intersections, are going to struggle with even higher density on them. And so, I just have a lot of concern about not letting the market make this decision. I think it's a market-based decision, especially in that area, and we are already offered that 10%, and I don't have a large appetite also to undo all that public work done before I was here, and all that process. I don't know if our citizens and the residents here, if their opinion has really changed that much on this issue. So, I would be a little hesitant to really change that number any further, to try to get the market to put more dense housing that far out.
And Council President Ackerfall?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to, I've been with, just kind of, one or two follow-up questions on that, and I think that we've talked about this during work session, but is it correct that the Frog Pond West, and I suppose other areas of Frog Pond in the future as well, but those areas will be serviced by Smart?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that area will be serviced by Smart. And then, I'm curious too, I mean, at the beginning of the presentation, you know, you kind of ran through a lot of the outreach that has happened, and the online survey, and the special focus group with the Latinx population, and things like that, and it may be too soon to share all of those, because I believe the online survey is still open, you know, and people are probably still responding, but can you give us a sense of the feedback that we are currently receiving from our community? I think it's important that we are providing, you know, and responding to the needs of the community, and there was some work that was done in advance, and as part of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, as what the needs of the community were, and that was wrapped into the plan, but I'm wondering what we're hearing, you know, just right now?
I don't want to spend too much time going into it, we will share that, but, you know, I would say at this point, from what we've heard from both the Latinx outreach, interest in smaller, more attainable homes, obviously, but also, you know, really, interest in privacy and sufficient parking. And, one of the funnest questions asked through this is, imagine you come back to Frog Pond or another neighborhood in 20 years, and middle housing has been successful, what do you see? That's a question we've, both in the Spanish focus groups, as well as in the broader meetings. Really, that, it came back around this integration, this successful integration, and good design, and a variety of options, it's, you know, having the variety, I mean, thinking about the kids, and what your kids are going to be able to afford here, you know, in 10, 15 years, and thinking about the variety of housing needs, but also, we've heard, as expected, that, you know, we want to honor the great planning that has been done in Wilsonville, and be consistent with that, so, there's a balance there, and I think the project team and the planning commission is, really has that in their mind. They respect, and it's been clear in the discussions with the planning commission, that they understand and respect the 2017 master plan, and as we'll talk about, the Old Town planning that's done, and how can we do this, it really respects that context. And think, you know, so much we've thought about that size and bulk and that design, and the context, and the definitions that we've been used to, and now that that's changing slightly, how can, you know, we get away from that multifamily, single-family dichotomy to making great neighborhoods?
Okay, thank you, I think that's helpful.
I was just going to add that we, you know, we do have an opportunity here to respond to a lot of community needs, and in looking at the, a lot of detail that was in the equitable strategic housing plan that everyone on the council here tonight voted to support unanimously, and in a real welcome to the idea of allowing people to have a home, and find a way for people in all stages of their lives to live in Wilsonville, which we have had over time, it's getting more and more difficult as the price of land goes up. This gives us some opportunity to address some of that. And also, in all of the conversations, maybe this is something of what we've been hearing that I've been involved in and heard a lot through our different committees and so forth, and I think it's definitely stated in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, that we want to maintain the walkable neighborhoods, we want to maintain quality, high-quality housing, and we want to maintain that, you know, do everything that we can to get the best out of this. We certainly do have, I would say, we are the envy of many communities, because we have already come so far in having a number of different housing types in Wilsonville, and I'm glad that we have that. It has been determined that the way the House Bill 2001 is, was completed, that does not change what is mandated by state law. So, we have that, and we also have the expectations we've set with our community, and so, I am really interested in following this through with some of the things that you mentioned, Mr. Polly, regarding the quality of neighborhoods, and how can we creatively add some more housing that can address these middle housing needs, and develop that in our community, and we certainly, I think... And we certainly, I think, do need to work on the parking issue. The state law says that we cannot require more than one parking space per unit, I believe is what it says. But the more that we can explore ways to make it, you know, give our residents more options there, the better. I'm really interested in studying that. So, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I mean, I don't have the results to share with you tonight since we're still finishing up, but it's been really interesting to see some of the feedback on the community survey regards to parking and really where does parking fit in with other priorities that people have. And so I look forward to sharing that with you.
And I, yes, we want to have green space, we want to have parks, we want to have wide streets, we want to have parking. You can't have all that in the same one square mile, so we have to balance all that out. Councilor Linville?
I know that in the staff, I took the Home Builders Association a virtual tour of when they did the middle housing and I was, it was really exciting to see some of those opportunities. And I think we're not talking about rental housing for the most part, we're talking about homeownership and especially if we go farther and allow the detached units. I think it's pretty exciting, some of the things that can be done. The one thing I wondered about is do you have any concerns about, I know that there is a mention in the staff report and I know that the Home Builders Association did some discussion on this as well, that some builders are better at middle housing and really that is a niche almost than all home builders. And so I guess my question is, if we do require the percentage on the remaining undeveloped lands, will we have problems getting enough builders that will be able to do that mix and do it really well? Because right now, I know there's a lot that, they're very focused on single-family homes and, you know, that's where they go. So I'd be interested in what your perception is about whether we, that creates some issues in terms of getting qualified builders.
Sure, I'll be pretty brief. I know we're short on time for this. I'm happy to talk to you. Councilor Linville offline in detail about it as well. But what we found through the outreach is yes, there's some, there are builders that specialize in different things. I would say not all builders that are active here specialize in middle housing, but there are builders active in the Wilsonville market that do have middle housing specialization. That said, if a builder ends up having a requirement that they're not comfortable fulfilling, there is the option that they sell the lots, the individual lots as well, to another builder. And then that builder can, that may have the more specialization to then build the middle housing on that lot. So there's a couple of ways that they could do it. But as we, based on the information we have, we don't see that as insurmountable to realizing what we're looking for.
Thank you. Mr. Polly, for the remaining time, we do have about 10 minutes for your section. And how do you want, how do you want to direct us with that 10 minutes?
You know, if there's any quick additional, I think I understood the percentage, it's similar to what I've heard from Planning Commission, if there's any last thoughts on the percentage. There's two other questions I have for you, which I think should go pretty quick, that I'd like to get to within, you know, within a couple of minutes.
So you have enough direction from the council?
Yeah, just if there's any last question, last comment on the percentage stuff.
Councilor West?
Yeah, just really quick on that. So my understanding when I read the risk report, 10% is required now, so you have to have, but only above a 10 acre, over 10 acres, right? Then 10% has to be like middle-type housing.
And only for the small lot, which there's a limited amount of small lot land left.
Okay. And this would say, no matter what the acreage, you have to have, we would increase the, I didn't even catch that percentage, I don't remember from the report.
We haven't determined a percentage.
We're working on trying to determine a percentage to increase it to, with no acreage minimum, am I understanding that right?
Correct.
Okay. And so you are asking if we want, if we are okay with yes, you want to know for a yes on both one and two to move forward, am I right? That's a dress.
Or at least maybe number two, at least support for additional exploration of the idea.
Okay. I support one, I'm not there with everybody yet on two. I know we're going to probably go ahead and explore it, but that's just kind of where I'm at. I don't think my concerns have been necessarily addressed, but I'll go with the majority of the council.
Thank you. I also did learn, I'd like you, one more question on this, Mr. Polly. Let's, you talked about several years down the road, so let's say, you know, we're down the road and so on and so forth. In a middle, in a single-family house, housing neighborhood, a person who owns a single-family home, given the lot size is sufficient and meets all these other requirements of our city, that home could be converted to middle housing, is that right?
Yes.
This isn't setting, this is not setting something in concrete forever, there still could be further conversion to middle housing.
Correct. And again, we're talking, and I didn't really clarify that in this presentation, but when we're talking about this Frog Pond question, we're really talking about initial build-out, which of course will set, set the tone for the neighborhood for, you know, decades. But it does not, but were required by state law to require potential redevelopment of any middle housing type anywhere in the city, even here.
Thank you. We'll go to your next part.
Okay, so the next part, just Old Town, so we did meet with Old Town, the community, and we've heard support for developing a new Old Town residential zone for a legislative rezone of the Old Town residential lots. You know, the neighborhood, they gave, they liked the idea based on the concept that was already in the neighborhood plan. Of course, they want to see what the actual zoning says before giving full support. But the general approach is we're starting with our current R-zone and then really adapting it for the specific context of Old Town, including making sure that the Old Town residential design standards that were developed a few years ago apply. And in regards to those design standards, we heard clearly through the process that to honor the past planning and the processes, all the work that's been done in Old Town. So keep it as the same to the extent possible, just where some small changes were necessary by, through the law, to adapt it for, to be usable for middle housing. So just want to, your quick, I'm guessing I know the answer to here, but, you know, want to put it out there, that this is still an approach that the council is comfortable with moving forward for us to draft these code standards and share further with the community.
Councilor West?
I'm curious, because I totally agree with the Old Town residents, let's adhere to House Bill 2001 while also, as we have to, but not do anything more and respect the previous public process. Why is that something that's desirable in this instance, but not necessarily in the Frog Pond instance? Is it something necessarily different or is it because it's a developed neighborhood already? Or so there's less leeway there and there's people already living there? Or, because I know droves of people testified previously on the master plan for Frog Pond West, so is there a huge difference in like not necessarily mandating, or that same mandate of percentage applied here also that we were just previously talking about?
No, that's kind of a unique thing for new urban areas that were written into the rules, Councilor West. For Frog Pond, any other, or sorry, Old Town, any other developed neighborhood, the rules require allowance of any of the middle housing types on any of the lots for redevelopment.
But am I right that both have gone through really historical, robust public process and many testimonies and input already?
Right.
Even though that hasn't been developed yet?
Yeah, in both cases, we're seeing, in terms of the design, we're seeing, we're not really talking about options of what we allow and don't allow in Old Town because really that option doesn't exist for Old Town. That's an option that's specific to Frog Pond West.
Okay. I guess ideologically and philosophically, I really want to support the neighbors in that part of our community that lives there on this option. I think it's smart, I think it's respectful. And I want to have, and that's my driving philosophy and approach for Frog Pond West because even though it's a little bit different process, there has been a robust process previously. And so I'm looking at both of these situations very similarly. And so I don't know where the other councils stand on this issue, but I hope that we can support this.
I support this as well. I think the, if you could, Mr. Polly, just very briefly state the difference in these two, you've got a new, Frog Pond is new urban areas. If you could just distinguish between these two neighborhoods and how this, House Bill 2001 affects them.
Sure. So were special rules developed that allow existing master-planned areas to develop, to allow them to finish developing according to the master plan as close as possible? Once they're developed, the same rules apply as the rest of the city. And so, and throughout the city, it allows all these middle housing types. So that's kind of the default, there's just a special provision for these master-planned areas that are currently underdeveloped. We haven't talked about Villawatt much because Villawatt's already further built out than Frog Pond as well as it's already at or above the age line units per acre, so really there's not the same discussion there. But Old Town, we're also doing a study of how likely Old Town is to redevelop, we'll share that with you in the coming months. But it's really then, we're just talking about design and making sure that the process is correct.
Okay.
And really at that compliance level for Old Town where there's more options about how you comply in terms of number of units for Frog Pond.
Thank you. Any other comments from Councilor Linville or Council President Ockervoll?
Well, I would just say that I appreciate that the work has been done on this particular topic with the Old Town neighborhood and that they, that they are in support of option number two. I think one of the things that we, that I would hate to see have happen is, I mean, I would like to see it done with a new, a new zone plan so that everybody has an opportunity to have input and to take a look at that as it's developed, so.
Thank you. So Dan, Mr. Polly, we have one more topic and then we'll go to our DEI presentation.
Yeah, this one's short. This one also had broad support across Planning Commission. We've heard it through all of our outreach channels, a support for this notion of a detached unit. I mean, there's a preference for detached generally from the input we're receiving, which we get, I mean, that's generally things, surveys like this get that response, it's the privacy, just the visual preference. And what we're required to allow is attached middle housing by the House Bill. But there's a broad support for this detached middle housing type and just wanted to confirm with the council that your support of broadly allowing detached middle housing units, the same as attached middle housing units. So where you could build three attached units on a lot, you could build three detached units on a lot. Again, there's going to be design standards to make it fit in or support context-sensitive design, but there's broad support, we've heard from Planning Commission and public on this concept, so just wanted to get your input as well.
I have a question.
Correct.
Sorry, a quick question. So I, when I, before I moved to Wilsonville, and everybody knows I grew up in North Portland, and there were a lot of like kind of wonky lots throughout, in a weird way, like different than Old Town, but similar, it's an old neighborhood, old, you know, some of the houses were around 100 years old, old bungalows and stuff. They started like taking these lots and dropping in these skinny row homes. And I remember just, a lot of the neighbors and whatnot, they were detached, but they weren't really quality housing, they didn't really hold up to the neighborhood standards. And is this something where we could see those skinny row homes? When you say detached, because I just visualize that because I looked at the picture on the right here, and they're all attached, but you're asking if we can do the exact same thing and make them skinny houses all right next to each other? Am I understanding that right?
So skinny houses, I mean, we, that is one, also a concept, a design concept we can apply, like the houses have to be so wide or something like that. So if that's a concern, I can work with our architectural consultants to see what kind of standard we could, we could do to avoid kind of the skinny, skinny house as a detached, like what you're talking about. But generally, we're talking more about kind of the cottage or a same scale as neighboring development. But make a good point about, you know, it needs to fit into the context and we're looking to put the design standards in place that support that idea, but do not overly increase the cost of houses or put an undue burden on the development of housing.
Just that one concept of skinny houses is not the best experience and then a lot of neighborhoods in North Portland side would just be concerned with that.
I'm glad you brought that up. I hear what you're saying there, Councilor West. And do we have, will we have an opportunity to weigh in on that kind of design, those ideas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have what you need, Councilor Linville?
I just have a real quick question and I guess, you know, we have this idea that they're all front-facing, would, you know, like they'd all be street-facing. And I know that when we did the virtual tour, there were some of those options where there might be six units that were in a U shape around a courtyard. Would we be allowing that to happen interspersed in or would, or would we require that they all be street-facing as in these examples?
No, that's called a cottage cluster and those are required to be allowed by state and the standards would allow those. Yeah.
Well, with that, are you good to go?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And we will now, I really appreciate that discussion, go to our diversity, equity and inclusion bylaws. And we are aiming to wrap up definitely by 7 o'clock.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm Zoe Monahan, the Assistant to the City Manager for the city. I'm going to share my screen really quickly so that we can look at the language. As you'll recall, I was here with the city council in, earlier in April, at the April 5th meeting to talk about the diversity, equity and inclusion bylaws. At that time, you had three questions that you wanted us to address. The first was regarding the number of members and due to the number of applications, there was an interest in increasing the number of participants from nine to 11, to 11 to 13. So we've updated that language that was in your packet in Section 4A as well as Section 5 to make sure that's consistent. There was also a question about ensuring that the voting terms language was consistent with other city commissions or councils or boards. And this is definitely consistent to include language that if someone were to fill a partial term or vacancy, that that would not count towards their maximum term. The language isn't always the same, but this was consistent. So that again has been updated in your materials and the updated bylaws. As we were looking into that, so in Attachment 2 of your packet, there's a number of different sections from existing bylaws for other boards and you can see how that was consistent. But it also shows that the hiatus period is for one year and that's consistent with all the other boards that identified that. So we have suggested changing this from three years to one year to be consistent with our other boards and commissions. Finally, this is the area where I'm seeking your input this evening. The city council had concerns about our current draft language, talking about the had concerns about our current draft language, talking about the appointments to ensure that it's inclusive. So, we had talked about this a lot at the April 5th meeting, and the concerns were that this may not be inclusive enough, we wanted to make sure that we were identifying the communities that have historically been marginalized and that folks feel inclusive. So, our staff team worked at this, we didn't have a great way to update it, so the mayor and our consultant, Bill Daly Cruz, discussed this, and they came up with the, the middle section here, the city council will strive to appoint members to the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee who bring their lived experiences, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, LGBTQ+, gender, socioeconomic, disability, age, amongst other identities. This still includes that appointed members will be expected to think in broad terms of how issues of racism, sexism, and ableism, or other discriminatory and prejudicial bias could impact residents in Wilsonville. In addition to this suggestion, Council West also submitted, um, a suggestion, so in that same section that we had the descriptive language of different groups, here it is that the committee, excuse me, the committee members would bring their lived experiences regardless of their immutable traits, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, LGBTQ, gender, socioeconomic status or history, disability, age amongst other identities. So, really this evening, I'm just seeking your input on what seems to make the most sense to the council, so that we can move forward with this language, we will then bring it back to you for your full approval later in May.
Thank you, um, Ms. Monahan, and I just wanted to say that we, um, we did ask everybody for, you know, just to think about this and give us some input, and, um, Councilor West and I had a chance to talk by phone, and really just a matter of expediency, we just presented two here, and I don't know, um, Council West, if you wanna give any other input, or others?
Yeah, I, I am, um, much more comfortable, I, to be honest, Council Linville's comment really kind of spurred a lot of thinking in me last council meeting on this topic. Um, and it made me think a little bit deeper, uh, and I, I just did. And so, I, like, I think that this, um, is much more inclusive language, it's also without being overly wordy, and, um, it is a great way to make sure that we want great people with great ideas of all backgrounds, of all people, of all races of any kind, to feel that they can have a voice in their community and how to make it more, um, diverse and culturally appropriate. And I know for me, one of the things that, um, I don't really ever want to be judged on is on my immutable traits, and nobody does, because there's nothing that I can do or change anything about that, that is just, it's just part of what nature gave me, um, but I want to bring what the essence of who I am to serve my community, and my skin color, my sexuality literally have nothing really to do with that, those are immutable. Um, and I want my character to influence it, and that's why that, that term immutable traits meant something to me, because, um, uh, I think it, it, uh, helps encapsulate that kind of idea. So, that's why I, I recommend it.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm in, um, support of, of that, um, option number two. Um, any other comments for us, councilors?
I, um, Your Honor, I'm, I, I am fine with either one of them, and I think that they both, um, a, address, I think the included, including but not limited to is, is a, um, it's really a, a great addition, and, um, and I'm, I appreciate Council West's, um, uh, comments and, uh, emphasis in terms of the immutable traits. I'm great with either one of them, and we'll go with what the council, uh, uh, recommends.
Thank you. Well, if, um, there are not any other comments, if there are, please raise your hand, otherwise, um, being the work session, um, Ms. Monahan, do you have, oh, Council Linville?
I'm sorry, I just have one, um, um, on Section 5, the term of voting member appointments, I, I see that there was a change, uh, where it says to begin, members will be appointed for, for staggered three, three-year terms based on fiscal year, scheduled so that five or four members are appointed or reappointed each year, and I just wondered if, if that was a little, um, if those, if those shouldn't be, I mean, it just makes my brain kind of look, feel weird, but maybe it should say four or five, um.
So, um, Ms. Monahan, can you just, I think, see if that needs tightening up, and I don't think the council needs to proof it again, but that's.
No.
So, yes, we'll look at that, so the intent there is to ensure that we get to that 13 members total, but yes, we'll look at that and make sure it's clean when it comes back to you for approval. Great, I'm glad we had this discussion, do you have what you need?
So, what I'm hearing is that the council would like to move forward with, um, Council West's suggestion, is that correct?
Yes.
Counselor, um, Council President Ockert?
Hey, I think, I mean, I think we can coalesce on this, um, I think that the big goal is that we have a committee that is functioning and serving the community, and I think that's something that we're all behind. I guess before we do completely put this aside, I, I wanted to chime in a little, um, you know, initially, I had a question several weeks, maybe months at this point back, um, about this language in the original, the very first edition of, um, this paragraph. And I wondered if, um, you know, country or, um, immigration status or language should also be included. Um, and it was explained, you know, that we really can't list every potential group, um, that's been marginalized, but we do wanna recognize that there's many different identities and combinations of identities. We've started to list a lot of groups, and we've moved towards that direction, and so I have a little hesitation that, you know, that's the direction we're going, 'cause we're listing some groups, but we're not listing all groups. Um, and I think we do wanna include everyone, of course, in this DEI, um, committee, I think that the, the big, the big, you know, beautiful verse in this part that I see is, um, that think broadly in terms of, you know, the other discriminatory and prejudicial biases, um, I think that encompasses a lot. And so, I'd love for that, that phrase to really be able to shine, so I see simplicity as, um, a way that that, you know, specific verse can shine, and I, I like simplicity, and we're kind of getting a little bit more complicated, but, um, I think that we all do see that we want all to be able to be included in this committee, um, that the focus does not need to be on validating groups that have historically been overrepresented, that it should concentrate on welcoming folks, um, from communities that have historically been underrepresented. Um, so, with all of that said, I'm, I'm excited to see, um, this process move forward, and I can, um, you know, welcome this language that we're proposing here, but I, I did want to include those comments, 'cause I think it's important, and, um, it maybe helps reflect where my mind is on the purpose and how we describe or define this group.
Great, thank you all. So, with that, Mayor, I think I have everything I need, we'll move forward with the language you have in front of you, Council West's suggestion, and, um, better I cross our T's and bring this back to you in May for approval.
Thank you. I will now adjourn the work session, and we will reconvene on the same link in seven minutes.
Adjourn.